Nine twenty-six.
Well, that's what I thought, because Marsh has gone that last one.
I thought it was nine thirty-five.
Really, Jackson? Well, and she asked you, he's out today, she'll be back tomorrow.
Everything I've done is all.
Nine twenty-six.
Whatever I have is.
Are you kidding? I'm kidding. I can't.
You don't know how close I was not being here today. I was streaming my flight. I delayed four hours and then they canceled my flight. And I called, I called Denver, Denver, Vail, um, Gunnison, right? We went to every airport.
I already canceled it.
Beautiful weather. Um, but my, my plane was delayed coming out of Dallas. Got there, couldn't land. There was so much traffic coming down. Had to go to, go to the airport on the other side. Can't think of the name of it. On the other side of the mountain. And then they had a mechanical issue and they couldn't resolve it. And I was told Suzie's plan, I'll stay in there for the whole week. Then drive back. I said, okay, we're just gonna drive through the night. And then some, I don't know what made me think of it. I have a friend who I know comes up here and he's got a recovery gym. And I called him and I was like, any chance you're going home today? And he's like, one thirty?
Are you serious?
They had an extra seat and I popped in and just, I mean, it was so important.
Six, twice for six.
And then my, turned out one of my college buddies was in the airport with me. And he was going to Austin. And so we separated when they canceled. Because he was gonna go to Dallas, then to Austin. And he texted me, he was like, if you had any luck, figured I was doing it. It's like, I just landed. I was like, oh shit, because I'd forgotten about it. I just, he was still, he wasn't getting into like twelve thirty, one thirty at the moment. But he actually, he found a way to get home.
He did.
Yeah.
Well, and I told you, we're driving.
So much better. That, that airport, I can't tell you how many times I've had problems getting in or out of that airport.
Is it good or bad? I'll ask you.
But I'm excited to, we have a plane in the afternoon or tomorrow, kind of give myself.
Good.
So, so you're gonna have a lot of fun. We had a blast.
And, uh, but this is your, your tonight amount? And what you had to do your other quarter? Okay, I'm gonna drive to Home Rock.
Before I do COVID, I'll say something again. I like you. I don't like you being taxed here.
Oh, yeah.
Then somebody gets home and gets. Change the.
Yeah.
Good.
I don't think, I don't think we'd ever do that. Can we do that in the auditorium portion where we're talking about budget improvements and stuff? Okay. Let's bring that up. Let's get it. Yeah.
And like all over each other a little bit, something to try to get rid of one another. What do we go to the Jimmy's that way? Like a little square. You gotta have a little.
For what? Oh, how, you're talking about fifty to a hundred.
Well, you always.
Thanks, James.
It's a nine thirty.
Somebody might be there.
Somewhere.
That's cold, cold. It's not thirty somewhere. There we go. Fire up. Was that a high school picture of your wife? That's awesome. All right. I call this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show it is nine thirty a.m. All five members of the court are present. We're streaming live on YouTube. If you're watching and you'd like to make a comment, please call in at nine four zero two two one two one oh seven. If you're able, please stand for a pledge and invitation. Commissioner Allen has the honors.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we begin this endeavor of public service. We acknowledge the need of your wisdom and insight as we strive to make the best decisions that serve the greater good for those we represent. Lord, please be with those who have suffered unimaginable loss and grief from the floods in central Texas. Give them strength and comfort in their time of such great need. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justness for all. I honor the day's flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we'll move to public comments. Uh, I've got a couple of public comments. I know a lot of us are aware of the tragedy down in Kirk County and the camp. And, um, personally, it, it hits quite close to home. My daughter went there for many years. My brother's niece was there. My house guest over the weekend, her niece was at the camp. One of my college friends has a daughter who's not been recovered yet or found, as Hope found. Um, but, uh, Jared Cook has been, from Young County, has been instrumental in working it. Josh Espinoza, or Dane Warden, he's also a water rescue expert. He's been down there. Um, we have a lot of Young County, and there's probably more Young County assets down there than I know of. But, um, I, uh, have been impressed by the state's reaction. And, um, I don't know, I thought, I think it's, it's a beautiful thing, what how many people have rushed down there to help. So. Any other public comments? None? Okay, we'll move to, uh, receipt of the hotel occupancy tax, the hot report. Eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents for May twenty twenty-five, and that's from the cabin of Salt Fork Ranch. Oh, I just want to do one more public update. I talked to Jeff Snowden multiple times while I was gone. He is working on a model and, uh, you know, he's working on numbers and stuff to present to us. So, uh, hopefully we'll, in a future meeting, we'll, we'll be able to talk to him.
Oh, there's the, uh, the cemetery.
Yes.
It's, uh, solid, it's under nine hundred. Can I let them lay it for us and all? I'll give the price and all that. Problem of it is, is where he gets his saw from got wiped out. With the red foot, right? They can't do no saws for probably till the end of the month.
Okay.
So it might be next month before we get that done.
Well, another thing, Commissioner Presswell.
Signs are up.
Signs are up? Good. Commissioner Presswell also helped to coordinate with Penny Barren and the four age kids, and they painted the cemetery. Looks beautiful. Absolutely, that the four age kids. One, I think they had a lot of fun with it, and it looks wonderful. Couldn't be happier with it. So, if y'all are listening, thank you.
One of the things, we got the generator installed and up going. It did that.
Excellent. Great news.
And we're paying for that with money we had left over in that budget.
Okay. Any other public comments? We'll move to item number four, which is consider the county clerk minutes from a previous meeting. That was June sixteenth and twenty-third. Good motion from Mr. Wiley and a second from Commissioner Presswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move to item number five, consider the treasurer's financial report and updates on securities pledged. No reports. We'll move to item number six. There's always a report. Audit, auditor's budget, if it's a voucher, it's payable. You're like my wife. You've always got a bill to show me.
Actually, I have no vouchers today. Sherry was on vacation last week. We did a little mini run last week and got back to that. But I didn't have the invoice or the estimate, uh, and y'all had a proof is to come out of our bids for the security code thing and the camera for our door down there. Uh, the bid came in at three thousand nine fifty-three. But we also asked to add one more of the little stations with the camera and the button to go on the outside, out in the open area. That was making four thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. I've been sent before to do that at our.
Okay. Did you factor that in for what we were talking about?
Yeah, yeah. The other thing we'd like to do is, is take somebody that's left from Red Arpa and put a generator out there at the tower for ISO and Commissioner's order. So we could have, here, it wasn't less than a month ago, lived down for five hours straight.
And we, uh, we tried for a couple of grants. We tried for a grant out of Nor-Tex, and then we tried for another grant, and we failed on both of those. So we did, we did, we did make a solid effort at trying to get a grant for that.
That's okay, we would get that.
How many generators do we need out there?
We'll put twenty-six out there.
No, we have bigger wig for that.
Can we take these separately? Some of it will be clear on the minutes. So the, the first is, um, do we have a motion for the, they were, I'm sorry, they were.
The security.
Cam.
For the.
For the door, the lock and everything for the door.
All right.
It was, uh, four thousand three fifty-one.
Three fifty-one. All right. We have a motion for Commissioner Craig. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Wiley. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And then do we have a motion to use, um, some of our remaining Arpa money to purchase a generator to go on to the tower with the sheriff's emergency equipment on? And the commissioner's radio tower? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley.
I'd rather we go ahead and give it to him.
We have a second from Commissioner Shuck, so that everyone will know he's at the meeting. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Judge, before we go up to the auditor's board, can I just make an example?
You may.
Take the auditor and then also possibly a budget. I received notification the other day that Encore is doing a rate filing case before the Public Utilities Commission. They're looking to increase the rates. It's, it's hard to know exactly what downstream impact does for anybody who is serviced by Encore. But some of the increases are double-digit percentage increases. The rate chart runs from twelve to fifty-one percent. The biggest one for me is a street light, so that's just the city thing. But on July seventeenth at the council meeting, we talked to the council about, we're gonna file an appeal. We're gonna see, ask council if we can file an appeal to that rate case and stay that. But for budget, potentially, there's probably gonna be some pass-through when you're looking at electricity numbers or anything that anybody buys power from Encore. And then I've got another conference call later this week, which like Texas Gas is doing the same thing, filing a rate case, and it could potentially impact our rates. I just wanted to mention that for budget purposes, whatever you want to do, but be looking out for it.
It shouldn't affect us if we've got.
We have to file your contract to T S U.
If the, and that's another reason I want to bring this up. So when Encore files a rate case, you know, that's a separate part on your bill. That's the Encore bill. That part can go up, then we've got a call.
It can affect that.
Exactly right.
That's what we're saying.
It's the hidden number.
Yeah.
And that's just the.
I hadn't heard about that, so thank you.
We need to look at. Or ask them in the jail.
Kill them.
Yeah, we just turn it off in jail.
Fill that generator up.
Hey, now, we can keep the jail going, but the sheriff's office could go without it.
Just the sheriff's office, but not, not the deputy's office. Just the sheriff's.
Not the jail.
All right. Well, speaking of the jail, let's move to item number eight. Discuss and consider renewing and or extending the interlocal agreement between Young County and, well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's the wrong one. Discuss and consider the revised inmate food contract with Sel Rico Services. Beverly.
Okay, so it was brought to our attention that the termination for cause was originally listed at thirty days, and that would have been impossible. So, uh, got with Mr. Rios, and he did change it to ninety days.
And so that's on page nine?
Yes, sir.
And item six point two, um, it changed from thirty days to ninety days. Beverly says she's gone over the contract and no other changes are in there. I did skim through it yesterday and, and double-checked that most of the big points were unchanged. Um, and then this was a point we talked about, how it really is for our protection that they can't walk away from us without giving us three months to figure out what's bad. Do we have a motion to approve the amended food service contract? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Craig. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you so much.
Also, just to tell you, they did, we just completed a limited compliance review of the jail lately passed.
I saw that. I got the letter.
Congratulations.
That, that's great news. Could you, uh, just give us an update on how the food service transition has gone?
It's going pretty good. I mean, we, we have our hiccups, but we're working them out.
Uh-huh.
But having them in there's been a big help.
Did you get your employees?
Yes, yes, we did. We have two.
Good.
They hired the second one?
Yes.
That's great news.
They ended up doing her full-time also. So there's two full-time employees.
That's even better.
It's a big help.
How about your inmates?
Uh, this morning, I have ninety-three.
Ooh, I mean, we got ten.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven liquid cash.
Good, what you said.
Yes.
That's great goods. That may not be good news to you, but that's good news to us. Thanks, Beverly. That's great news. All right. The one I've tried to do before, discuss and consider renewing and or extending the interlocal agreement between Young County, the City of Graham, the City of Almy, Stevens County, and the City of Wrecken Ridge regarding bond supervision. So we have an interlocal agreement, um, with those parties for Cliff to do the monitoring service for. And one thing we haven't done is adjust that contract the last three or four years for, for the increase in, in our cost for the bond supervisor. I went through and just quickly threw into a spreadsheet. The, the one, the numbers on the left are what's in the current contract. And then in the middle, that's how the percentages came out. For example, the City of Graham was thirty-one percent, Young County twenty-three percent, Wrecken Ridge nineteen percent, Stevens County seventeen percent, Almy ten percent. That was based off population and then rounded to, it, it was based off population and then they tripped it around into even numbers. But if you took that percentage and just said, okay, what's it gonna be with what the bond supervisor's salary's gonna be for next year? So I took last, I took the current salary and put a three percent raise in there that we're, that we're going on giving. This is what the breakout would be. So for example, for the City of Graham, it'd go from twelve thousand five hundred to fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars. For us, it goes from nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars, and so on down. My proposal is that we would offer this interlocal agreement to these entities again with that adjustment to, uh, reflect what the current cost of the bond supervisor is. Are there thoughts or concerns about that? We haven't changed it the last couple of years. We've, we've given our bond supervisor raises, and, and we've just covered that. So, you know, option is we can continue at the current price and just eat the raises ourselves, or we can make an adjustment.
The insurance cost on the bond supervisor?
I, we, we pay the, we pay all that. This is just the salary portion, not the benefits portion. We're, we're covering the benefit portion for that bond supervisor position. And I'm not proposing that we pass that on.
Judge, did I have a comment?
You may.
We've got some, we're here, Chief Bullock's down at the chief conference in San Antonio, but we'd just like to say, we'd really like you to consider continuing this program. It's a huge help to us. They do a great job. We've called you several times. It's just something that's gotta be done, right? And if we can consolidate it like this, I think it benefits everyone in the county. It's the most efficient way to do it. And then the other thing is, I wanted to make the clarification just for the budgeting purposes, right? So I, I think July is the month they send us the invoice, so it would be, this, when they send out the invoice this month, it'll be at the rate that you see on the left, right, with the current.
Yeah, it's the old rate. Yeah. This is for next year.
Rate would be affecting.
Hundred percent for next year.
For next year. No, we won't give a play more than that.
Thank you, Judge.
Yeah, no, definitely, this is for next year. Does everyone think adjusting to the current salary is the right move?
I do.
Would someone like to make a motion that we submit this contract to the one, two, well, five entities, including ourselves, with, and, and Timmy and I will make an update on the contract? You have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shuck. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. I'm gonna give you that, so we can make a change to that contract. Bye. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you. Let's move to item number nine, discuss and consider accepting a donation from the Chamber of Commerce due to the success of the Crawfish and Canyon Festival. Seven thousand dollars is what they wanted to send us for our share. Um, they've actually submitted that check. Did we give it to you yet?
We have.
Okay. So, uh, do we have a motion to accept the seven thousand dollars from the Crawfish and Canyon?
Motion.
I'm gonna give that to Commissioner Shuck, since that's in his backyard. Would you like to second it, Commissioner Wiley? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. And, uh, Jim, since you're here, um, was, from your standpoint, was Crawfish and Canyon a success?
Yeah, um, I think we were all surprised this year, just because of the band we had. They typically have older crowds that follow them around. And so we were kind of nervous about turnout, but I just wanted to show how well the event is itself, that we.
The diversity of it, I think we.
Yeah, I mean, they really need.
Catestasy people catering young people.
Yeah, yeah. It was real team crowd, too. Very, very team crowd.
No fights.
No fights, nobody.
I know I had a lot of fun. Even, and it was scooter accessible.
Yeah.
I scooted around. Yeah. It was sweet, handicap friendly.
We just put the seven thousand dollars, I guess, in miscellaneous in the general fund.
It would go in the general fund, yes, but we can, we can use that money. Well, the money's gonna be used for Fort Newell now, but then it goes in the general fund, and then we can then apply it over to Fort Belknow. But I mean, that's, that's money that, um, that we can use for.
We got some ideas where we can use it.
And in fact, in the budget workshop, we're talking about, we're gonna be talking about some of that today. All right, item number ten, discuss and consider renewing an annual subscription for Thomas Reuters for the district judge. It was, uh, the current, current bill would be three ninety-seven, three ninety-five seventy-five, and that's up from two hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents for an increase of a hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-six. That's the database, a legal database that, that, uh, Judge Gregory uses to kind of research law in his cases. It's honestly, it's a, it's a must-ask for his position.
I think he budgeted, when he talked to us, he, he knew that that was gonna go up.
Well, we'll double-check, um, but I guess there's a bill that's coming.
Ahead for conference.
Yep. So, uh, do we have a motion to approve this new cost for that? Motion for Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? There's a second for Commissioner Presswell. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Let's sign this. We might go run that for you.
Thank you.
All right, item number eleven, discuss and consider two invoices for manmade destruction, um, for the, for the renovation project. One is twenty thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars, and the other is thirty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight. That's a grand total of fifty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two, and is it, it's my understanding that's the final, final bills?
What, what this is, is, is the twenty-something thousand is something that was up to what we had, and the rest of it is overage or retained, is what we have left over. We retain ten percent out of each one of them, that everybody's online. And they are done with everything. All the outside doors are in place. Uh, we even had a chance left over. We got to paint the foyer on the inside. Got to put the door in, and it cleaned two offices up here where you split the treasure. The office sits in place, and it's hanging. So everything is done. And also too, on the elevator, there was some things that wasn't done properly. Came back this last week, finished touching up and finalized that deal right there, so that project is finished.
Great news. I tell you, the auditor's office, I think, just turned out perfect. I'm really.
We appreciate it.
So happy with it. And treasurer's office turned out nice. So you're happy with it?
Yeah.
A little, got a little echo chamber.
Yeah, yeah. Ended up, I used some, uh, soundboard.
Yeah. Well, the good news is.
Get your guitar and just start singing.
Yeah.
When you say something, you get to carry it back and see if, oh, does that really make sense?
When I go home, I just, I talk, talk like this.
Do we have a motion to approve the two invoices for manmade destruction? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. We have a second from Commissioner Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number twelve. So Commissioner Shuck, you were not here for this. But we had a resolution that we discussed and signed due to a grant deadline seeking up on, on, on K D. And, um, we have a motion today to ratify the fiscal year twenty twenty-five have-up-grant resolution. And that resolution is in the packet, and so we'd like to get it ratified so we can be part of our Commissioners' Court minutes. Do we have a motion to ratify the signed resolution? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second from Commissioner Presswell. All in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Thank you. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider requesting sealed bids to purchase and remove the courthouse gazebo. Seal bids will be opened Monday, July twenty-first at twenty twenty-five at ten a.m. So this is come from people requesting, um, the gazebo. And knowing that we're, we have a plan to replace that gazebo.
So have interest, people interested?
We have people interested in basically taking the gazebo and then refurbishing it for other purposes. And we've had people, we've had people volunteer to, you know, that they will remove it for us for free, but we can't give, being a tax entity, we can't give assets away. So the thought is, uh, I can't remember who, it might have been Jimmy's idea, why don't we just sell the gazebo and take up the bids for it? So, um, I know we'll have at least one or two bids on it. Might be one dollar, but, um, I, I think, I think this is a great idea. One, it, it'll cost us money to have to remove it.
My question is, do we take the asset and move it to this situation?
Well, I'm not worth selling.
Take the highest then. Cheryl, Cheryl has all the.
Yeah, there's a copy in the packet, and I'm sure if there's anything else, I, Jimmy suggests I put proof of insurance for removal. That way, if they come in and tear something up, I, I guess we would supervise the removal of that.
We need to, we need to have some kind of insurance.
I was gonna ask if there's gonna be stipulations in there so they didn't tear something up along the way.
So the way it's read, reads as Young County is requesting sealed bids for the sale and removal of the current gazebo in the courthouse lawn. Gazebo will be sold as is. Proof of insurance for removal will be required. Bids will be mailed to Young County Auditor, P O Box six oh seven, or delivered to the physical address, five hundred and six, Fourth Street, Suite one oh three. Please clearly mark envelope as gazebo bids. Bids will be received until four p.m. on Friday, July eighteenth. And opening Commissioners', open the Commissioners' Court at ten a.m. on Monday, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And then for additional information, we gave Cheryl's home number.
Might as well.
And ask for calls the after ten a, ten a.m.
After eight-thirty, probably.
Uh, do we have a motion to, uh, approve this plan to sell? Motion for Commissioner Presswell. Do we have a second from Commissioner Wiley? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Thank you, guys. Let's move to item number fourteen, discuss and consider an application permit to install an entry culvert in County Road Right-Away ditch line for Lower Tonk Valley Road. Commissioner Presswell, is your item?
Um, there's no property sold up there in Enigma. They're wanting a culvert that's in between the creeks, so it really, they're going to have to have something there. So I'm going to go ahead and say this, I have my motion to withdraw this culvert permit.
All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Presswell. Do we have a second?
Our second.
Second for Commissioner Shuck. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider an application permit to install an entry culvert in the County Road Right-Away ditch line for RG Loop. Commissioner Craig?
Yes. That, that well, that's a lot of, ten acre section of land on South RG Loop. Looked at it, definitely needs a culvert there. Failed to put thirty-four acre diameter on this application, which would be eight twenty-four inch, uh, thirty foot tall. I recommend we approve this application.
All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Craig. We have a second from Commissioner Wiley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Any, uh, item number sixteen, discuss and consider burn restrictions?
I'm trying to burn that garage up front of the house. It won't burn.
Burners will get to it if we want. If you win.
No action.
No actions.
I tell you, we are getting some future fuel.
It is.
It's just crazy. We all have rain at least once a week or roughly.
Yeah.
Or every day.
Yeah. At some point, we're going to be begging people to try to burn some of this stuff on. All right, so no action on that. Would we like to take a small break before we start our budget workshop?
If I could have a few minutes, I need to go get that to the newspaper so they can.
Um, gentlemen, before you run it down, can you sign the new Selvico contract, please?
What about you, James?
Jimmy, did you let the?
Oh, we need to sign.